We are good. Steve, I will turn it over to you for Finance and Facilities Committee report.
All right, thank you. So the Finance and Facilities Committee met on Monday, October 14th, and we had several items for discussion in our meeting. We had four proposals that were put out to bid that I want to just give you a little bit of background now and then I'll have resolutions during the board meeting later. The first one was the sewer maintenance cleaning contract. Adam Rathbun spoke to the committee about the college renewing an annual maintenance contract for the campus sewer lines and all manholes. This contract will cover maintenance for the college and the residence halls. The second proposal was the swim group proposal. It's a sole source proposal on leading change. And again, Adam Rathbun spoke to the committee about their proposal for consulting services that would facilitate leadership development for change readiness and management workshops. Let's see, PAC will work with the swim group on a development process to address the college's culture, morale, trust, and better communications across the college. This initiative responds to reports from the Chronicle's Great Colleges to Work For survey and the SUNY Wellness Check completed last spring. The third one was a dental RFP. Adam spoke to the committee about the college's need to revisit the current dental health plan contract to be compliant with the college's collective bargaining agreement with the Duchess Educators, Duchess United Educators. Again, our current offering of dental service did not quite meet the requirements, so we put out a proposal or RFP to, you know, increase our coverage to what is required. So we'll have a resolution for that at the board meeting. And the last bid was regarding sign language services. Adam spoke to us about an accommodative bid service for sign language services. So again, we'll have the details of the proposal, but there's actually a couple of different vendors that we will propose be approved through this resolution. The best value bidder will be given first priority on our needs throughout the year. But we've had some experience where one company could not always provide what was needed. So we had to go to a second, sometimes a third company. So this proposal will allow us that flexibility. We'll go to our number one company first, you know, per the bid process, but then we are lining up number two and number three to help us out when needed. So. And we had one presentation. So as we approached the end of our fiscal year, Adam provided the committee with a report on the year-end budget for the fiscal year 2024. And it was preliminary at this point, but with an increase in enrollment, it looks like we will have a small surplus for the year. Okay? And then one last informational update that we were provided. Scott Schnackenberg provided the committee with an update on the Megatronics enrollment numbers. He clarified that the Megatronics enrollment covers two populations: student in our Associate's Degree program and our credit-free micro credentials program. There's a third population in the pipeline for new pathways, which is our Duchess Bowses PTEC program, which launched in September with 25 students. So those are the items we covered in committee.
And that is a great segue to a presentation from Scott on Megatronics and the enrollment there.
Okay, you should have the presentation, and it's pretty long, and I'm going to follow Russ's example from last month and go very quickly through it. So first, it's just a reminder of our funders, which are SUNY Future of Work Center, Duchess County, the Empire State Development, and the capital of 500K from Caput Projects funding. So in year one, our goals were to have 30 more credit-free students and 12 credit students more than we did the prior year. And we did a lot of things to try to reach these goals. Sorry, this thing is, there we go. A lot of different marketing initiatives went into reaching these goals: using Google AdWords, paid social media, revamping the website, business-to-business, different admissions outreach to counselors, to different school districts. So a whole plethora of different things went to try to bring in students to it. Looking specifically at some of the things we did, Google AdWords was a huge, had a huge impact on it, and perhaps not in the way we thought initially. Initially, we tried using Megatronics as an adword and found it went nowhere. We weren't getting much traction with it. Once we added HVAC, however, to the keywords, we had an explosion of interest in the program. So we had between HVAC and ELT, a lot of interest coming in through the Google AdWords. So we also used a lot of paid social media to get interest in the program. It focused on Duchess Ulster and Potnum, but also expanded into New York City. And what it says here is to use those with very high intent to enroll score. So let me talk about that for a minute. We worked with a company called College App, who has a sophisticated algorithm based on the characteristics of the people living in different areas and what we know about them, and they know a lot because we can look at an individual level at each home and see a lot of information about it. And prior to that, this company worked with voting models, and their models are very strong in terms of guessing who might be interested in coming to college. So we used that for areas beyond this area. We also used it within the area, so at least 50% likely to come for students, for people within the county, but also people outside the county because people are willing to travel for this sort of thing. We also did, oops. Business-to-business and content marketing as well. We had ads in local magazines and also had a video that showed one of our students, one of our local students, and how they progressed through the program. I encourage you to watch it, it's a really powerful video. The student does a great job talking through it and really does a good job of promoting our program. All right, so first, first to your credit enrollment. So spring to spring, we had an increase from 32 students to 48 students in our credit enrollment programs. The goal was 12, so that was substantially, or four students more than our goal in the program. Both the air conditioning program and the electrical technology programs improved substantially in the first year. Second-year goals were to have 60 credit-free students. Now, we'll say in the first year, we had 33 credit-free students, so we were above the goal there as well, though not as far above it as we were for the credit students. And also to have 24 more credit students, doubling the amount we had more than prior. We had much of the same kind of outreach. One, two new things that we're starting to do, which we now have a billboard, a digital billboard coming up Route 9. I saw it coming back from Kennedy Airport the other night for the first time, and it was quite impressive. Caught my eye right away. And we hopefully will in November have Duchess County bus wraps, as well as ads inside the buses in the county. Marketing continues to perform the same way. Again, Google AdWords performing very well. And again, largely HVAC driving people to our site and driving people to apply. Sorry, I seem to need to press it three or four times before it moves.
Yeah, my baby's asleep.
Okay, go ahead, next slide. Okay, so the marketing in year two, again, we also improved our internal website, and so the clicks that are coming through that have more than doubled since the first year. Next slide. And here's a view of what the digital marketing looks like on the sign, as well as what the buses should look like once the wraps are put on the buses. Next slide. Okay, so enrollment so far this year for our credit students, for electrical technology, 31 continuing, and 27 new for air conditioning, 10 continuing, and 16 new. Next slide. So overall, we have 84 students in the two programs. Two years ago, when we were first ramping this up, we only had 38. So that's 46 additional students. Our goal was 24, so we nearly doubled our goal in new credit students in the program. And that's kind of exciting because it's only using the programs we already have to double it. So we have a whole lot of room to grow further. Next slide. That's just a graphic representation of what's happened in two years of enrollment in the credit programs. Next slide. Credit-free programs so far this year, and it gives the specifics here, we have 15 students, but we're only two months into the year. Credit-free enrollment happens at different points throughout the year. It's not on a semester basis. So we're ahead of schedule to be at 60, perhaps substantially ahead of 60, depending on how well things go. Things have not gone as smoothly with credit-free as credit. I think a big issue we're finding is, one, credit-free courses are not very expensive. The students have been getting into them, some of them, and then not going, or finding times in their work schedule where they can do it, or they have to do it at night after working all day. So Ray and I are meeting next week to discuss with the faculty some, what are some of the alternatives we might do to make it easier for students to do these credit-free classes? Make it, try to make it work within their workday, work with the companies to make it work within their workday in a way that'll make it work for the students in a better fashion. Next slide. So we mentioned PTEC enrollment and having a first cohort of 25 students. So these students will be getting, both graduating from high school and getting a two-year Associate's Degree in our ELT program at the same time. So where we already have 25 students, who two years from now will be at the lab. They'll also be taking courses next year in the high school. Next slide. These are the partners we're working with right now. The school districts are Pauling, Wapengers, Arlington, and Poughkeepsie. But the expectation is that number will grow next year. I've certainly heard students and parents from other districts saying, why aren't we doing this? And I'm hoping they get that to their school boards and to their superintendents, and we'll see more schools next year. Next slide. Currently, 25 participants, and I just mentioned the schools. Next slide. The goal is next year is to have 50. And so this is going to feed us as we go in two years, three years, four years out, should be putting in 25 to 50 additional students a year. They'll be with us for two years. So we'll be a lot of students and a lot of credits. Next slide. We continue to do community marketing, having presentations and walkthroughs and tours through the lab. We've had approximately 175 over the last year and a half, and we continue to do that. Both education partners, government partners, interested community members, pretty much anyone who would like to go through the lab, we've been making it happen for them. So I think that gives us a lot of cachet in the community. People know they can come through, they can see it, it's impressive, and I think it gets good word-of-mouth out for us. Next one. Planning for the rest of year two, what we hope to do. So the big one is HVAC launch. Working the curriculum through Curriculum Committee now, getting that set up with Hopes potentially starting next fall, but even if not, we should be able to start with some things next fall. Continue with our corporate outreach. I talked about trying to change things up with that a little bit before. Ongoing marketing campaign, which has been successful, we'll continue to do that. But as we've seen, we're also going to branch out a little more into not just the digital marketing, but signs and the buses. And so we're looking forward to next fall, and the new program should make a big difference. Next slide. Particularly with HVAC. So between HVAC and PTEC, we have the potential to grow substantially over the growth we've already had. And I don't think we've topped out in the growth in our programs. We do need to have more faculty to do some of this, but we're really in a good place to continue growing almost at an exponential level, where we've been going up very quickly in two years, and I think we continue to do that for the next few years. Any questions?
What do you anticipate the goal will be next year for enrollment?
Based on what we've, I'm assuming it's going to be roughly where we're at now in terms of credit students. Non-credit, I'm not sure where, whatever, because I didn't, was not part of the process of building the goals, but I'm guessing it'd be 100, somewhere in that level.
And when the programming was designed there, what was the capacity anticipation of that programming?
It's, I don't know if there was a capacity thought of. I mean, I think it's, the capacity right now is more built based on timing, having to do things at different times. When we talked about Saturdays and evenings, we can, we still have significant capacity to go beyond where we are right now.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dara, you have a report on the NY CCT.
So I went to the New York Community College Conference in Saratoga for really two, two long days. And it was really great to hang out with all those people from all over the state. So that's kind of the biggest thing. It felt important to be there and for Duchess to sort of, you know, have a face. Sometimes I feel like we're ahead of a lot of these colleges in a lot of our thinking. So it was good to see that. But some of them are doing some really cool stuff and had interesting, really interesting things to say about the main topics, which were building a healthcare workforce and AI. The guy who gave the AI presentation invented the zip file. So it was as disheartening as it was exciting. But his, I'll get into his basic lesson in a minute. But the first day was nursing, the second day was AI. We also had Chancellor King as a visitor. So a bunch of things came up that first day around Chancellor King's visit. One of the main ones was political investment in services. Community colleges need to communicate what they do and who they are to local, state, and federal politicians, as well as unions, county officials, and businesses. This is the message, basically. We need to rebrand community colleges along the lines of, we're not who you think we are, or our door is always open, we're not SUNY Lite. That was a comment somebody made, and I thought that was kind of great. The fact that community colleges are more facile and provide what the individual community needs is often lost in our communication. We target students who are not prepared for the rigor of higher education and give them the skills to succeed. We're open access and exist for anyone who wants an education, no matter what their skills are. We were encouraged to bring a student whenever we go to our legislatures and to go early and communicate well, and we're experiencing that ourselves. We were also encouraged to find out how our representatives vote on certain issues like the Bronson Bill, the call for an 11th Board of Trustee member from staff or faculty, which the NY CCT strongly opposes, due mainly to the conflict of interest. We were mentioned for our articulation agreements with partnerships. Chancellor King then went on to talk about program completion. This is something we've, all the stuff we've been talking about, right? Currently, 20 to 30% of community college students do not complete. Advice for how to get funding from the state legislature was be real. Advocate for workforce development. He wanted us to hit workforce development because altruism doesn't work. That was the message. Increase enrollment, retain students. He was adamant that little moves the legislature, that little moves the legislature in our direction. This is at the state level, right? But they, they've got their recent increase that we did get was tied to economics and nothing else. The inequity between SUNY funding and community college funding was made very apparent to him, as was our opposition to the Bronson Bill. And I happened to sit next to his handler, so she got my, you know, she got near full from basically Dr. Susan and I, because she had sat down with me and given me all of the wording. Food insecurity. We had an afternoon on food insecurity. Schenectady Community College took on the mandate for a food pantry, which was mandated for every community college. They initiated Pantrysoft, which is an app that allows students to order food each week, which can translate into numerous languages. They raised money for their food pantry through private donors and partners like Price Chopper and Hanaford. They have a base of donors they can call on in emergencies and an endowment for the purpose of feeding students. Recently, they wrote and received a $45,000 grant through a state contract for refrigerated food smart lockers so that students couldn't get to the pantry during their open hours. They're only open four hours a week, could pick up their orders anytime. They partnered also with Cornell Cooperative Extension for Baskets, for the Grab and Go, and their Culinary Arts Department for Meals, as well as their Music Department, which at times charges a non-perishable item for their concerts instead of monies, and then they donate the item to the pantry. Local markets have campaigns to buy food for students. Their Maintenance Department was very willing to help pick up food and bring the boxes to the pantry. They also work with students on SNAP, EBT, and WIC and help with eligibility applications and denial appeals. They also require that in every teacher's syllabus, there's a reference to food, to the food pantry. Their foundation has a mission to raise money for scholarships and needed programs, and they work closely with their president to identify community needs so that the college can respond. This year, they raised $9 million for healthcare programs. At the foundation, they have staff assigned specifically to different college programs and who do public and private grant writing, as well as liaison with the community. The healthcare system, the comment about the healthcare system was that in the US, it generates our healthcare education problems. The people felt that it's a broken system, which education can help with. We can alleviate the crisis with funding for education at the community college level. We need to build the healthcare workforce. Hospitals will take over the training of their workers if we can't. These stakeholders need help now, not when you can get up and running. They cited their Casino Skills Program, which is now obsolete because of a dying off of jobs. Challenges: critical shortage of nurses, people leaving the job because of PTSD, stress, anxiety, burnout. COVID helped us to understand what was already going on. By 2026, they estimate a shortage of 3.2 million healthcare workers. In 2021, until now, 92,000 qualified applicants were turned away from programs because they were not prepared for the rigor of the study. Health, that's in New York. Healthcare education is expensive due to the necessary low student-to-teacher ratio, which demands small classes, and small classes cost more money and lab equipment is costly. So some ideas they put forth were create summer programs to acclimate students to the higher level of work specific to healthcare. Partner with local hospitals with joint appointments for teaching and working so that people who were working in the hospital would always be, also be teaching like over here. Hospitals should be asked to help with tuition. Then they showed us their mobile training lab, an enormous trailer pulled by a Ford 350 Dually. They have one for workforce training and one for healthcare, and they have a vast rural area that surrounds them. These things were to die for, you know, the huge tractor trailer that opens at the back end, and you walk in, and there's all the goodies, all the toys. AI. Todd McCleese gave a three-hour keynote as a representative of Human Skills AI and publisher of the Responsible AI Innovation Playbook, Higher Ed Edition. This is the guy that invented the zip file. He said the term AI was coined at Dartmouth in 1956, so it's not new. He said the current IQ of AI is 120, and in a year, it will be 400 to 500. The current attention span of a human being is six seconds; a goldfish's is nine seconds. Community colleges are in the best position to teach and use AI in the best possible way because of our access to students and community shareholders, and because we teach people to learn at scale. He feels that AI is going to displace workers. It will force change, and it's six months away, not years. The skills we're teaching now will disappear in a very short time, but community colleges are facile and can change more quickly than the bigger institutions. Again, you've heard this before, but we will see the fastest tech change in history most comparable to the printing press in 1440. He made the point that before the printing press, eight books were published a year. Speed is what industrial revolutions are about. Workforce skills will be obsolete within 10 years of learning at best. There are perishable skills and durable skills, and durable are transferable to tech innovations. We need, we're going to need verified humans. I put that immediately on my signature on my email. AI will provide a 40% uptick in speed and quality of work. It can build well-being by talking, taking over tasks, which took too much time, and improving the quality of the thinking of individuals around those tasks who use it. He feels that we blew it with social media and Facebook. We can learn from the printing press. How do we maintain our well-being in an AI economy? He divided the application of AI as such. What is automatable? Middle management on down will be automated as admin skills and at a much reduced cost. What is augmentable and what is human work? And that community colleges can deliver the runway. To manage AI, in his view, using it is to democratize intelligence. And we need people, workers, who can apply emotional intelligence and critical thinking with a focus on well-being in order to handle the future. He thinks of AI as a partner to work alongside, not a boss. We're not its victims, we need to use it. We need to train for a balance of fast and slow work. I love this. Expository writing, humanities, critical thinking. Learn, leap, learn, explore, apply, practice. He said, don't kill the humanities. Help students be more relational, less transactional. Teach social skills, communication. Loneliness is one of the biggest problems the country faces due to social media. Being human is a skill that we're going to have to teach. I have two more pages, I'm not going to deliver them, but that's the essence of what the weekend was about. And then there was a fun dinner, and we all went home.
Sounds like it was a great time. Frank, Foundation report.
Yes, the foundation hosted the Dr. D. David Conklin Distinguished Lecture Series with 60 guests in attendance. The foundation also has been named in the bequests of a former faculty member. More details to follow on that. Foundation will be holding a board retreat on November the 16th and a new member, I'm sorry, a new member orientation on the 30th. A strategic plan for the 24 to 2030 has been approved, provided in all of your packets, actually, you have a separate packet, are lots of marketing materials that are beautifully designed by the foundation for the foundation. Congratulations to Diane, a lot of work went into that, and it's about time. It's been a long time coming, so please take a look through those. And it's nice to be able to have when you're talking about potential donors. I know it would be helpful. I know it would be helpful for me as well. The strategic, I'm sorry. Diana was the vice chair at the Council of Advancement and Support of Education Conference for Community College Advancement in Baltimore last week. She was joined by Vice President Adam Podpoura and Director of Development Anna Pora. Diana co-presented a two-and-a-half-hour presentation entitled "From Rubber Stamp to Advancement." My understanding is now that they're looking to have her develop a book. She has been requested from several folks that were in the crowd that she develops that book, so she's going to work on that, I hope. And there are several events upcoming, including this Thursday, the Richard Raitano Endowed Chair Dinner. Fall music fundraising, November the 6th. Foundation Philanthropy Day Meet and Greet Breakfast, November the 15th. I hope all of you can attend. Couple of others that are on the calendar, including the Holiday Craft Fair and the Board Holiday Dinner, which is December the 5th. Hopefully, they'll save the date for that as well.
Thank you very much. What's going on? Exciting. Diana, anything for the Foundation, for the Association?
No, I don't think, no.
Okay. All right. We are going to move right into our board meeting unless there's any objections. Okay, good. Seeing none, Joya, can you call the board meeting to order, please? Read the, we will, let's just start with a roll call, and then we'll go into the pledge.
Mr. Bobby Beersack?
President.
Mr. Frank Castella?
President.
Mr. Stephen Katswell?
Present.
Ms. Derek Clapp?
Here.
Mr. Michael Dupree. Ms. Angela Flesk?
Present.
Ms. Lisa Garb?
Present.
Mr. Ebus Guzman?
Present.
Ms. Evelyn Panichi? Ms. Linda Pratt?
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you very much. We will start with the pledge. Frank, the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've all had an opportunity to review the agenda as our motion to approve.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda approved. No one signed up for public comment, so moving on to the consideration of minutes from September 24th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes?
Thank you, Frank.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lisa, update from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee. That's okay. You guys, perfect. Ebus, anything from board policy?
We did not have a meeting this month, past month.
Steve, you already gave your committee report, so we will go on to your resolutions.
Right, so I did give some background on these four resolutions that I'm going to present tonight, so I'll jump right into the resolutions. The first one is Resolution 2025-11. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the bid received for sewer line cleaning maintenance service agreement be awarded to Fred A. Cook Jr. Incorporated from Montrose, New York, the low bidder in the amount of $11,450 in accordance with the specifications for a multi-year contract in the amount specified on the attached summary sheet for labor and equipment with operator for work outside of the scope of the contract. This contract is for one year with provision for two one-year extensions.
Thank you. Linda, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next resolution.
All right, next resolution, 2025-12. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the college to enter into agreement with Swim Digital Group in an amount not to exceed $47,720 as a sole source provider.
Second. Thank you. Linda, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next resolution.
All right, Resolution 2024-13. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that a three-year contract for dental health insurance services in accordance with the specifications be awarded to Guardian Life Insurance Company of New York, DeWitt, New York, or, sorry, the Guardian Life Insurance Company of America, DeWitt, New York, kind of jumped the gun there, for an estimated annual cost of $286,426. And be it further resolved, the contract will have the option of two one-year renewals.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next resolution.
All right, my final resolution, 2024-14. I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolve that a one-year contract for certified sign language interpreter services in accordance with the specifications be awarded to, number one, Mid-Hudson Interpreter Services of Poughkeepsie, New York; number two, Sign Language Resources Incorporated of Newburgh, New York; and number three, Interpretech from Rochester, New York. With Mid-Hudson Interpreter Services having the first right of refusal for fiscal year 2025. Be it further resolved, the contract will have an option for two one-year renewals.
Second. Thank you, Linda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you very much.
Angela, I have Lisa's report.
Oh, okay.
It got in line.
Can I just cut it this short?
Okay. This is the Academic and Student Affairs Committee meeting. The committee received updates from members of shared governance. Matthew Palmetier, Chair of PSA, and Michael Adams, Chair of PSO, attended the Academic and Student Affairs Committee meeting on October 9th. They provided the committee with an update on what their respective shared governance bodies are currently working on, what concerns they have, and a plan for their next meeting with the committee in December. At the December committee, we will discuss recommended action from PSO and PSA for further changes to the use of facilities for free speech policy. And there were some informational updates on the upcoming board and student leaders' dinner, which we had tonight, reminders of the current board meeting schedule, and the rescheduled date for the Board of Trustees group photo in December. Dr. Jordan also spoke to the committee about potential honorary degree recipients and commencement speakers for commencement 25.
Trustee Beersack.
Thank you. So some events to cover. Today, we had a design assign event in the cafeteria where students got to make personalized custom designs for signs. I made this one also. Trustee Beersack's office. Humorous. I enjoyed it. This Sunday will be the Fall Family Festival. We have 17 students signed up to volunteer, and we have inflatables, bingo snacks, a performance of The Lightning Thief by the DCC musical cast, and other activities and so forth. Next week, we have paranormal specialist Ross Allison returning to DCC on Tuesday, 10/29, for our annual Bound Hall Basement Ghost Hunt. Some trips coming up are going to be the Broadway trip to see Water for Elephants on Saturday, 11/2 at 1:00 p.m., and there will be another NYC bus trip on Sunday, 11/10. The Fishgill campus will be visited by the Party Pros Asian Name Painting Team on Wednesday, 11/6. And this weekend is filled with club-organized events from the Monster Mash hosted by the DSMG to the Beyond the Veil Band Performances. And lastly, there will be the Rocky Hore Picture Show, which will be screened at midnight on Friday with a live cast of DCC students.
Great. Sounds like you have a lot going on.
Definitely.
Moving on to my report, I want to thank our student leaders, as well as many of my colleagues, for a great dinner that we had right before this with our students. It was a wonderful time, as always. Marsha Butler, the Assistant Dean for Enrollment in Student Success, secured a $5,000 grant and programming from the JED Foundation to support our offerings for student parents. This opportunity to empower parenting students through innovative programs and services is in line with the recruitment and retention of adult learners in our overall strategic enrollment management plan. Our commitment to the adult learner, in this case, student parents, has led to an enrollment of almost 1,000 students age 25-plus for the Fall '24 semester. Enrollment in Student Success has launched several ed sites, chatbot campaigns, targeting students in introductory-level courses, academic engagement, belongings, homesickness, and computer check-ins. Falco, our chatbot, identified over 200 students who could benefit from an additional outreach. Mike Rowe, the Associate Dean of Student Services, and Michelle Diano, Assistant Director of Admissions, hosted over 30 school counselors from Dutchess County for the annual Dutchess County Counseling Association luncheon on October 4th. The luncheon was very well-received by the school counselors, and they were engaged to help DCC with creating new initiatives that would point students to enrolling at DCC post-high school completion. On Thursday, October 10th, DCC, in collaboration with Mental Health America of Dutchess County, hosted the Other Side of the Door Shadowbox Art Exhibit, which took place in the Washington Building, for World Mental Health Day. The artwork showcased what was created by U.S. veterans who used symbols and images to express the emotional landscapes they have endured as it relates to mental health. The DCC Counseling Center partnered with 12 community-based agencies, including DCC's Active Minds Chapter, and Human Services interns on October 10th for World Mental Health Day in Drummond Hall. The DCC Counseling Center partnered with Grace Smith House and faculty to bring the Clothesline Project to Washington Gallery for the month of October. DCC student David Ahmed was named Mid-Hudson Conference Athlete of the Week for the week of September 30th. Coach Zach Reed and members of the DCC Men's Soccer Program attended the Out of the Darkness Walk on the walkway over the Hudson to support suicide prevention and awareness in our community. The Sensory Lounge is now available to all residents of the Residence Hall. Students have been excited to access the space, especially during midterms, to help with decompression and having a quiet space. A desktop has been set up in the lobby to assist students with printing their assignments. Students are now able to print their essays and projects from the printer in the common area instead of having to travel across campus to the library. The Rain Cats won the October Educator of the Month. Details are in the newsletter. The first cohort of 25 PTAC students, as we saw in Scott's presentation today, were welcomed to DCC Fishgill with a tour and hands-on activity on September 30th. An application to Council for Adult and Experimental Learning was submitted to have DCC's credit for prior learning information via our website featured on the CPL Provider Network. And we're one of six institutions in New York to have been selected. The Dutchess Community College Speech and Debate Coalition traveled to Lafayette College in Easton, Pennsylvania, to compete in the Speech and Debate Tournament held October 12th and 13th. The only two-year school in the competition, DCC, had a successful trip and placed third in the highly competitive field, so we are certainly proud of them. Here's a picture of them. It was also featured on our social media, so great to see them doing well with that. The Division of Institutional Effectiveness has been instrumental in supporting a fall communication effort entitled "This is Our Future." A series of four presidential town halls will focus on one of the four lenses and help to communicate and inspire the vision of how we serve our students in the coming year. DCC's Third Annual Fall Family Festival will be held in the Washington Quad this coming Sunday. Come out and enjoy apple cider donuts, pumpkin decorating, and a range of festival activities for adults and kids. Costumes are strongly encouraged. We look forward to seeing how Dr. Jordan tops last year's.
Dr. Jordan has to go shopping.
We look forward to seeing how Dr. Jordan succeeds at shopping. This is a problem when you set the bar high, it's really hard to lower it now. So you probably should have, like, come in a little bit, a little lower last share. The digital team in Marketing and Communications has been working heavily with IT to lift an Intranet for DCC faculty, staff, and students. They're working to create the architecture and web design for this project. This new tool will greatly improve the internal communications and allow each department to build out their key information and sections while utilizing a secure and modern method. What is it that I have? Dr. Jordan, I will turn it over to you.
There are two things I want to talk about as part of my report. The first is commendation and thanks, photo thanks on behalf of the college to DeeDee Barrett, Assembly Member DeeDee Barrett, who visited with us a couple weeks ago to tour the Residence Hall and to talk about and learn about how the college is spending the $300,000 that was provided for DCC in the state's enacted budget for this year. She got an update from Whitney Morris and others about how those funds are supporting DCC students and helping them persist towards degree completion. And these are students who are housing insecure and food insecure as well, so a big shout out and thanks to Assembly Member Barrett, who continues to work diligently on, or behalf to, help identify state funds to support that year-round housing effort. The second is that, as I said last month, I plan to identify a sort of unsung hero department within the college each month to highlight. And this month, being Cyber Security Awareness Month, I'd like to shout out our DCC IT and Media Services staff. Some of them are here at this point. We give them a round of applause. So this team continues to work diligently to ensure that DCC networks and software and systems are both running and secure. And secure is the key word here because we know how nefarious actors are behaving across the Internet. And we've been fortunate, but it's because of the diligence and hard work of, or IT and media teams. I also want to let you know that Deepa Dubal, who is our new CIO, will be visiting with the Board of Trustees in December to talk more about the IT plan and its rollout. So we'll hear more about that. That does form my report. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, President Jordan. And on the topic of our homeless students, one of the students that Ebus and I sat with at dinner tonight, near the very end of dinner, literally said, "I cannot tell you how grateful I am for DCC cares. I reside in the dorms. I would be homeless otherwise." And that kind of stops you in your tracks and makes you realize the impact that this has on the students. And, you know, I would never be able to be here and just could not stop praising the resources that we have at Dutchess to make our students successful. So, you know, we certainly saw this evening that in action, and it's incredibly powerful that she's having the ability to attend college and reside in a safe, secure location due to the resources that we have here at Dutchess. So certainly something not to forget.
And we're serving close to 40 students a year in that capacity.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other business?
Chair, we have the personnel report from Committee Chair Dupree.
Committee Chair Dupree is not here this evening. Are you giving it for him?
He has given me the report.
He gave you the report, okay. I'm very sorry to have skipped over you.
That's okay. October 10th, we did meet, we did have a meeting, and the committee did receive our calendar updates, and of course, we discussed personnel issues and concerns. We also received a presentation on the Swim Digital.
Hi. Thank you for that, Trustee Castella. All right, our next meeting is October, excuse my goodness, October. It's because it feels like it's July. Our next meeting is December 10th. Have a very happy Thanksgiving. I cannot believe that we're approaching the end of the year, and we will see you on December 10th. Thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Get home safely.
Thank you.
Let me know if you want to keep our Thursday on.